...call on all of us to the board, 51, 23, 23rd. Our first topic is solar power options. We've got some information from Allers Cooney. I think we've got some information that compared by his these. Is this here?
Yeah, and Janet, we do have Kristi Vada on the phone from Allers as well. She's joined us this evening. We have her on the speaker.
So I wasn't sure how we want to aggressively want to go through the debt. Do debt directors have questions, have any review it? Are there some highlight points that you really want to kind of point out to start the conversation?
So Kristy, I don't know if you can hear Janet. She just asked, are there any highlight points that you want to give to start the conversation rather than go through the whole debt?
Yeah, I don't think we need to go through it all. But yeah, I feel like, I guess I have a couple of, you know, high planes I would hit, if that's a good way to start.
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Okay. So, you know, I think probably the key to your discussion, to looking into, you know, solar power in school facilities and the different, you know, contracting methods that are available to you. To me, the key is really just to look into or consider the structure that you think, you know, you would be most interested in or be most beneficial to your district. We have seen proposals take a variety of forms in this way. And I think the slide that I provided, you know, break that down pretty nicely. But, I mean, essentially, you have an option of, you know, purchasing the equipment. You have an option of, you know, a lease of equipment. There's lease purchase, which we don't really advise because that has to be competitively bid and that lease purchase structure just doesn't tend to mesh well with the competitive, you know, bidding requirements. And then, you know, there's things like power purchase agreements where you're not really purchasing or leasing equipment, but you're, you know, simply buying, buying power essentially. And then the final option would be kind of like a lease of space from the school for equipment. So basically, the owner leases school facility space, which I think looks more like a rental agreement. So I am happy to, you know, visit about all those different forms of proposals or those variety of structures as we discuss this. But each of those has different implications when it comes to, you know, the money or the funds that you can use, as well as the different considerations. Like I mentioned with the lease purchase, you know, would have a problem with competitive bidding, or at least we tend to think so. So, you know, it's, obviously, the policy and business aspects of this topic are for you to consider, but I can inform you along the way, I guess, of some of the legal consequences that might flow from that. And, you know, the only other thing I guess I really want to note is a lot of this, a lot of these contracts have relied on the changes to school district authority with regard to home rule. The one thing I want to point out in that regard is, you know, we used to operate under Dillon's Rule, which, which meant that, you know, the schools could only do those things that were expressly granted by statute or were necessarily implied. So it was a little more restrictive in terms of authority. Now there's, you know, a statutory amendment that provides that the board can exercise, you know, broad power. But while it does alter Dillon's Rule in the way that the grants of power are interpreted broadly instead of narrowly, there still has to be some grants of authority from which power could be broadly implied. And that's where, you know, the framework is set up for these different structures with regard to what funding source can you use? What kind of contract do we have power to enter into? Those kinds of things. So I think it's just important to remember the impact, I guess, on the statutory framework that a school has kind of set up our discussion for the options of structures that you have available to you.
So my question would be, what, what sort of agreement would allow us to use anything but the general?
Well, a, a purchase of equipment would allow you to use pebble sales tax as a primary source of fund. You would have some limited financing ability from the general fund, but it'd be, you know, as I said, somewhat limited, it'd have to be an equipment note kind of thing. So you would be able to use pebble sales tax for a purchase. You would also be able to do that for a lease of equipment to the school. In that case, your lease can't exceed the period of voter pebble authorization, which, you know, makes sense, right? If you think about it, obviously, if you're going to use voter pebble for that lease agreement, you want to make sure that the lease doesn't exceed the period of pebble authorization. And then, let's see, with regard to, oh, you know, the power purchase agreement, those are more of a general fund power expense. So a purchase of power, which I think would look more like a payment per, you know, kilowatt or whatever the method is, that would be something that would be more general fund, whereas your purchase of equipment, lease of equipment, those would be pebble slash sales tax as your primary source of fund.
And we're already paying for power out of general fund, right? That's where that comes in.
Right.
That's why I'm going to ask a question a lot of the same, well, make a statement, I guess, more than a question, because I do appreciate the efficiencies that have been put into some of our newer construction and our remodel, because I feel it is leveraging one fund to help the general fund by not paying as much power and stuff like that. So if that's where I would be looking at as an opportunity, anything that we can leverage in different funds to help the general fund would be great. I'd stick within that realm, I guess, because it's, it's worked out pretty good. I guess I would ask the question, what has been our biggest hurdle that we haven't done a bigger push in solar in the past? Besides with all the legal stuff, like physically, I know, we talked one time about retrofitting on old roof, like cutting into roof membranes and things like that, hurting warranties and stuff. But what other things have, what other things can we look at? If we're going to look at solar, there's things we need to work around, obviously. So I don't know what those all are.
Well, maybe one of the big ones is, so you mentioned that, and Duane's here, and you can chime in on that, but certainly retrofitting older buildings is a challenge. There's a, when you think about solar, there's really two options. You have stationary solar that you mount on a roof. More effective is pole-mounted solar that has azimuth tracking, that actually follows the sun. And North Liberty actually prohibits that. You are not allowed to do that. So that would be one significant hurdle that we would have as we-
That's totally in North Liberty.
They're going to make an exception for Liberty High, but they don't allow that on any residential property.
I guess I can see it on residential property. But they would accept Liberty?
What's that?
They would accept, make an exception.
Well, we split a site mine two years ago, and they approved it, and they agreed to stand by it, but that, but it does violate their ordinance. Some of the other issues associated with building and retrofit is the actual uplift. But, you know, when you, when you build solar panels on a roof and you put them at an angle to maximize your gain, you get wind uplift. And that's more of an issue than the weight of this panels. So you don't have, you have to go in and modify buildings structurally to prevent that from lifting up like an airplane. So those are issues in addition to the weight and the roof membrane may take care of. So there have been some physical limitations on retrofit up until now, without the Dillon's Rule.
And maybe another thing to think about, and you, I made a good summary of it, is you talked about some of the other things that we've done, and probably in particular, I think the one you're really referencing is our geothermal work in buildings. And so we built that into our plans, and I think that certainly one of the things that we can look at moving forward is, are there opportunities for us to consider that as a baseline part of our plan? You know, my answer to that is always that there's an at what cost issue, because if you designate $5 million for a plan, and right now, we put a certain amount of it into geothermal, that takes away from other things we could do in the project. We also add solar to that, or wind to that, and say, that's going to be a part of the baseline. We can certainly do that. We just have to recognize that there's going to be a trade-off to that when we go through it, and there may be some other components of the project that we don't complete in order to complete that part of it. We're already doing a little bit of that now with geothermal, but I think that's just something we need to consider.
I add to that just a second point, that we've done a lot of energy analysis of all the buildings, and we've worked with this called the white group. And they actually go through and look at all the different possibilities for safety energy. It's lighting controls, it's heating controls, it's the geothermal, it's the type of equipment we're using, it's the type of weld we're installing. And they evaluate all those aspects for payback. And then they, they also evaluate the percentage of reduction in energy costs, and based on that, we get a rebate. And we've garnered easy three or four million over the last six years of rebates from the energy companies. We've asked the question many times, how about solar, and how about LED lighting on the exterior, like on football stadiums? And both of them have a tremendous, tremendously long payback. It's not near as good as geothermal. Geothermal pays for itself in five, six years. If the cost of electricity goes up, it's even faster. The LED lights on football stadiums are real losers, 20 years plus, and solar is about the same. So the payback on the solar hasn't been there, so they haven't encouraged us to do it, to help with those rebates. So that's part of the history of where we're at today.
And one of the things, too, is that it's different when you're a private entity and a public entity, because on the private side, there was strong tax rebates and incentives to have those installations put in that really have no appeal to us being a tax entity. So those are, those are, I remember earlier discussions we had when the big thing in the private sector, well, you have these tax rebates, well, I mean, it's nothing about us. It is, like Duane's saying, it's the payback on time, you know, the money we put in, is it, is it going to do it? I mean, no one's going to say we don't want clean air and clean water, but, you know, at what expense, right now, does it, does it fit into our, to our plan?
And Duane, what we were talking about, would that be the same as having, do they do a comprehensive energy audit of all of it? Is that similar to what your, like the white group does?
Yes, after we complete the project, you mean? They go back, well, during the design, and then they come back when we're done and actually audit what's there to make sure that we complied and that we're getting payback. It's a pretty comprehensive program, and it's been good for the district. Something else, just to skip me though.
I mean, is that mostly they can have putting panels on buildings? So for example, if we just put them out in the field, does that change the equation?
I think that installation costs would be much cheaper if you put them out in the field. You saw Johnson County do that. But then, on a school site, it's a matter area and fencing. And we were told, just recently by our electrical engineer, that if we wanted to do Liberty High School totally solar, it would take 70 acres of panels to do it. So we don't have the physical space to do it.
Well, and I don't, I'm certainly not under an illusion that we're going to do total. I'm just saying, you know, is, is there a sweet spot where, you know, we can take a 20-year payback, get some solar in a visible location even to help, I think that helps.
I think there is. And as a result of conversations we had several years ago, we decided to do this experimental project at Liberty, and it's under construction as we speak. It's the bus maintenance facility that'll get adjacent to Liberty High School. And we're purchasing that with, using funds, our infrastructure funds, probably. And so we're making a sale to save out a lot of the black and white. But we are buying that equipment so that we can control it, so we can monitor, so we know exactly what kind of payback we'll get in the equipment. So it's truly a demonstration project that we have underway right now.
So what's the pros and cons of power purchase agreement versus dispurchasing?
I think of power, my perception of it, and it may be different from Steve and Craig, is that-
We might get Kristy to chime in, too.
Yeah, you're, you're at the mercy of the people that's providing the equipment and their monitoring of it, and I just, I, I'm reluctant to, we'd do better if we controlled ourselves.
And what fund you're going to get out of it, too?
Kristy, can you offer anything on power purchase agreements? Any more information?
Yeah, the way I understand how those work is that, you know, so a third party, you know, owns the equipment, and so then the district just purchases, purchases power along the way. And like I said earlier, they can do that from the general fund. An agreement of that nature can include some discretionary option to buy the equipment. You know, the district can buy the equipment at fair market value at the end of the, you know, at the end of the term of the contract. And if you buy the equipment at the end of the term, then you can use pebble or sales tax for that. And I don't believe you have to competitively bid it at that point either. But it's important that that be a discretionary option, sort of like an option for the district to do that. It can't be a requirement, you know? So if there's a requirement that it be purchased at the end, then that makes it like an installment contract, which is not authorized. But if the discretionary option of purchase isn't exercised, or if the district says, nah, you know, we don't want that, then it just is removed at the end of the agreement by the, by the third party. And usually, what I've seen before in these power purchase agreements is they will include some sort of, you know, either a lease or license of use of school property to the power provider for location and, you know, maintenance of the equipment.
And the technology of those panels has gotten so much better. First one I did was in 1977, it's just up to date. So I've seen it, I've seen the technology grow. But even with what we have today, the lifespan of these site, these panels is only 20 to 25 years. So buying a panel in 20 to 25 years on lease purchase is probably not a good investment for the district, because you're about to turn it over.
I was going to say, if, if I understand it right, the plus to a power purchase agreement is that you are not buying the equipment, and what you're paying for out of the general fund is just less than what you potentially would have paid for power earlier. But my question then is, where does the cost come in for installation in that? If you're doing a power purchase agreement, that you're not owning the equipment, somebody's got to install it.
It's my understanding, Kristy, you can jump in. They own the equipment, they do the installation, all you're doing is buying power for them. So really, the difference is, you're buying power that they're generating on your property through some kind of alternative energy source, or you're buying your power through Mid-American Energy. You're just, it's simply who you're buying the power from. And then at the, at the end, the option to purchase the equipment if you so choose to do so.
But they might get tax breaks.
They might get tax breaks, right. We don't get tax breaks, they get tax breaks.
And what's the cost comparison of that power?
The energy may cost the same amount that you're paying from Mid-America.
Right, yeah.
It's the same, but yeah.
Right, it's just the source is different.
And the thing that limits us from really, it being a real sweet thing is, is when people put it on a private thing, you can generate more than you need and get payback on it.
Push it back into the grid. Right, we're prohibited.
We're prohibited from that. So that's, that's the, that's the one thing, you know, we can buy land, but we can't sell it a profit.
Right.
You know, everything we have to do has to, we can't be in business to make money.
Right.
So anything you do would either have to be, meet the needs of, that's the most you could do would be to make enough to meet the needs of a facility. You couldn't get on the, on the end that in the private sectors where the sweet spot is, is that not only can you meet your need, but you can also essentially spin the meter backwards and you can get paid for what you're generating.
And maybe just to give you some context, and I think I shared this with a couple of you, when we were in Wisconsin, we built a new high school up there, we actually found a foundation that was really looking to make a name for themselves and, as an environmentally green foundation. And they donated enough money for us to erect a commercial wind turbine on the campus and a home wind turbine on the campus, stationary solar and pole-mounted rotating solar. And we put that all in, and collectively, that generated about two months' worth of electricity for the high school each year. So that, you know, if you want to think about kind of how much you can generate, and we're talking full-size commercial wind turbine on the campus.
And there was no cost to the district?
They paid for the whole thing. Again, it was a foundation that was really looking to make a name for themselves in both green energy, and we cooperated, University of Wisconsin Stevens Point came in and wrote us an entire K-12 curriculum that was indexed to state standards, that was plug and play for teachers, so they could swap it in and out. So for them, this was a defining moment in setting the direction for their foundation. So if we could find somebody that would be willing to do that, I bet we could get one of our, we could, we had to go through a huge wind and sun analysis, so they come in and assess your properties, and they, they picked a property that for us worked really well in terms of generating the wind energy and the solar. So if we could find somebody that would be willing to do that, I think we could find a place to put it.
How do we, how do we find somebody? Is that super running out?
I was going to say, we can certainly start looking. It's a big-ticket item, you know, you're talking three-quarters of a million bucks.
All of that, I'm not weak.
You know, if you look, if you look at a school, even new schools, the biggest cost is in heating and cooling utilities. Your lighting cost isn't that significant, because we're using much more efficient lighting fixtures and that. And we're using LED fixtures for light with all our new buildings. So it made sense for us long ago to start looking at how do we improve the heating and cooling efficiency of our building in geothermal as an answer, because it did leverage the infrastructure in better for the general funding, and it still is. And as, along the way, we've learned those rebates from the utility companies make even better. So I really think the district has done the right thing by focusing on heating and cooling. If you focus on solar or addition of solar, it may help with some of the extra costs associated with, with lighting in the buildings, which we've improved. We have light harvesting, we have light giving controls, we have all kinds of ways to, to save money now. This would help a little, but I don't, I wouldn't expect huge savings from it at all.
To be honest with you, it winds up being more of an educational component in many instances.
And that's, that's where, you know-
Right, and that's why we did it.
Right. It is, is that, and it, it is going to be a community discussion, and it is going to be something that, and like Duane is saying, the technology is getting better.
Every day.
We're still not where we want to be yet with storage and things like that and transmission, but, you know, getting, there's, it's enough that it's, in its infancy, it's going forward. But in, as far as us being a part of that conversation and, and the educational opportunities, not only for our students, but our communities to see, that's, that's important for us. Well, since we have our expensive attorney on the, on the line, what, what have you run into across the state? What's, what seems to be popular and, and are there some examples you have of some, some things in the state?
Yeah, well, first of all, not that expensive.
Okay, well, that's it. Then take your time and your response.
But, you know, here's what I'd say, is there's really a variety, you know, as an initial matter, it's not like I see as many of these as, you know, as I might see of, you know, one-to-one agreements or Google-type agreements. I mean, these are still kind of more on the, you know, innovative side or cutting-edge side in terms of the different logistical arrangements. And I think with the change, you know, about a year and a half ago for, to the, with regard to the home rule provision, it seems like that's kind of what has, you know, loosened some folks up to look at this. So I would say that, you know, there's a, it's not an entirely common thing to have in place, but to the extent that I have seen it, they've been varied. I think there is some probably tendency to look more at a power purchase agreement. It seems like that is more what I tend to come across typically, the, I think, oh, probably desired to look at that, is that I, I am envisioning probably a many districts see that as a compromise in terms of wanting to, you know, explore this area of solar power and to kind of get in the mix, so to speak, but yet not have the, you know, initial upfront cost of buying the equipment and, you know, competitively bidding the process and choosing the lowest responsive responsible bidder and those things. I think the power purchase agreement probably allows for the most flexibility in terms of what that scenario will look like. If you have that discretionary option to buy, you know, at the end, then you can decide whether or not you keep it or you don't. Though, you know, the one aspect of that that I think is probably important to bear in mind is, you know, maintenance costs and those things. Even if you're not responsible for owning the equipment, there may be some ongoing maintenance, you know, associated with that, which presumably would be a general fund expense. To the extent I've seen other districts do, like pebble or sales tax purchasing of equipment and, you know, financing it through those funds, as I said, the, I mean, the most cautionary aspect there is to avoid anything that is an installment contract, because you'll just have to make it an upfront purchase. And you, to the extent you have authorities to lease purchase, because you, you can, you know, from a purely technical, legal standpoint, but as I said earlier, that lease purchase structure does not jive with the competitive bidding law. It, it's really hard to figure out, you know, how exactly, you know, we can comply with that. So that, those are the things I think we've probably, you know, moved folks away from are both of the installment contract arrangements and then the lease purchase arrangements. And that kind of leaves you with either a, you know, upfront purchase or just a straight-up equipment lease or the power purchase agreement.
But you don't have any school district-like examples that we could look at and see how, how they worked?
Oh, yeah, you know, what you, if you, if you want me to send some examples that we may have on our system or some contracts that have gone through with our changes, you know, I could send those to Steve at some point for you guys to look at as examples. You know, the, the key is really, from, from my standpoint, from a legal perspective, the key is just deciding on the kind of arrangement that you want. And then I think we could have a variety of different contract forms or samples within that, within that particular structure that we could look at and decide. Because once we decide on a structure, that's where we'll get into the nitty-gritty of, well, you know, what is the term length that we're looking at? What are we comfortable with in terms of, you know, the amount of money and the ongoing maintenance and those things? Where, how can we maybe balance the, the impact that that scenario or structure will have on our current utility situation? You know, because we usually advise that you review upfront with your utility, your current utility provider, what impact, what impact doing the solar option will have with your utility rate, because sometimes that can change your energy unit cost, and suddenly you're, you know, you're under a different rate there. So it's hard to, it's hard to understand or to estimate the impact of those cost and technology changes without, without first deciding, I guess, on what bucket or boat you want to look at in terms of that structure. You know, are we interested in a purchase? Are we interested in a lease? Or, you know, in terms of purchase, is that a power purchase or is it a equipment purchase? And I think those are the big upfront decisions that will dictate, you know, the rest of, the rest of the conversation. So it's really, it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples or to look at different examples without kind of having an idea of which, which of those options you'd like to pursue, or at least, you know, maybe a couple of them to think about.
So if, yeah, as I say, so if we're looking at this for the partial purpose of the educational aspect, then we have to think about where we want to put it. And unfortunately, probably where we want to put it is not going to correspond with our source of funds if we're looking at purchase of the equipment, because we just simply don't have pebble funds anymore.
Right.
And we can't use, if like, let's say we want to put it at West High or something, we just simply can't, I mean, like you said, unless we change our project, but, you know, the bond was built around certain projects, so we can't, we really can't just do that. So our only option is the power purchase agreement if we're doing it in locations where we're not already building a building and doing something significant.
Maybe one thing to keep in mind, since they're going to be talking about SAVE tomorrow, is from a, you know, as we're kind of thinking about this is, this is a long-term option for us, we're going to have to pass a new revenue purpose statement at some point in time. There is the opportunity, as you go through that process, to add alternative energy sources inside a revenue purpose statement, which would give us more flexibility when we're doing remodeling and things like that. Again, then the only trade-off is the, we'd have to downscale the project a little bit so we could upscale alternative energy in there, and then we, but then we could, we'd have the opportunity to have that conversation.
I guess, yeah, I'd be interested in looking at power purchase agreements, and, you know, just what the outright purchase, you know, just to compare those. Like, I mean, I don't want to get into the leasing or any of that.
So the unintended consequence is that you have to replace the roof when you do that, if you put it on a building, because the roof's going to wear out about the same kind of solar panels. And if they're not in sync- And if they're not in sync, you don't want to install something that you're going to have to remove.
Think of it in front of West High.
Yes, that's what I was going to say.
Pointing out some of the obvious things to me anyways, there are some unintended consequences.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I can understand that, and if you're going to go in and build a new building, I see that, but, but I want to be cognizant of that, and I also want to be cognizant that we're not, you know, I wouldn't want to produce more than you, you know, so therefore I probably would need to produce exactly the same building, but less, so that we don't ever bump up against that we can't get money back in the grid. So we just have it at, you know, because the truth is, we're not, I don't think we're looking to run our whole district out, yes. We want to have some examples in some areas where maybe we are going to make some savings.
I'm excited about the project at Liberty because it will be up and running when school starts this fall. So we'll have some real tangible results from those panels up there, we'll know how they're, how they're performing.
And then I'll do what the maintenance is.
Yes.
Has there been any, because we're only talking solar, I know there's some school districts that have wind, is there?
You know, Paul, Steve, you were there, we put up a, Cornell College came down and helped us put up a whole lot of ban out before the school was built and to test the wind in that, and there's not enough wind to, to make a viable.
Yeah, I know there's five or six school districts.
You kind of need, you need to be in the, they actually will be able to track the wind flow and geographically they can, they can tell you, you can actually get somebody that'll come in and look at all of your campuses, this is what I did in Wisconsin, which was that same thing. They'll come in and they'll look at every one of your campuses and tell you when or whether any of them happen to be appropriately situated where they're in a, a wind tunnel, if you will, so.
There are places like Alexander, it seems pretty.
I think he's put, put them up at every gas station because it's always the windiest place ever, so. Well, you also have the problem with the, with that you keep, if it, whatever fall over has to stay on your property. So now you get into distances and then you got the blades and you got issues with that, so. So, you know, it's not real good, we, we really don't have the space for it, which is part of the problem.
So, so we've got the trial at Liberty where we're going to home implement, we've got, obviously, yeah.
Right.
So could we trial a small power purchase agreement somewhere?
Certainly look into it. So I can work with Christie to figure out who else is doing them right now, take a look at how they're structured and who's working with them and see what our options look like.
Yeah, I'm just not concussed to anything to have somebody come in and tell us they want to start with something.
How it could tie into our ag program or CED education, I think that way, for sure. Opportunity.
All right?
Yeah.
Christie, thanks for hanging in with us, I appreciate you sticking around.
Of course, yeah, no problem at all. Steve, if you want to follow up, you know, with me tomorrow and, you know, send me an email in terms of, you know, what, what you'd like to see as far as a couple samples, I'd be happy to provide those.
Sounds good, I'll give you a call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, as from a curriculum.
All right, thanks, guys.
From a curriculum standpoint, I don't know if you want direction from the board on where we would like to see this? You know, or, or what, if you want to come to us with a recommendation of what you think it makes most sense?
So, and like I said, as we start to develop the capacity, I, I'll tell you that one of the things that was most attractive about the curriculum for us was that we actually had a live website that showed real-time metering of the energy that was coming in. So then when they incorporated into the curriculum, the data that they used, they could download off the site, you know, they could pull their spreadsheets from it, so if they were doing math or science, whatever curriculum components that they were working with, it was our data, they could get on a bus if they needed to and go to the site and take a look at it. And that was really what made it work for us.
Was that, that curriculum specific to sustainable energy? Or did it go into the climate change that we've got here on our?
Well, it was, it was cross-curricular because it wasn't just math and science, it was also social studies and language arts, and that's where the climate change piece comes in.
You could, yeah, you, you could, you could apply it all over the place.
Right, and that's what we did, and it was all indexed to the Wisconsin standards and then it literally, because you don't want to put it in a position where teachers have to do more, so this was instead of. So if you want to meet these standards, you could do it however you were normally doing it, or you could use this unit, which has already been developed and has already indexed the standards and plugs into third grade science, fifth grade language arts, eighth grade social studies, ninth grade, you know, math, whatever it was, you just plugged and played. And then, again, it was, for us, it was the, the wow factor, being able to go out on the campus and see it. It was being able to go to the website and download our data and work with our data. And so that was, for us, that was a real driver in it.
I just, I just wanted to see if it could be used early, elementary, elementary school, starting to create new students. Do we have that interest passion, do we want to grow and have more?
So one of the weird things, and it comes up because it's the next day I'm on here, and we did this just for your benefit, our, the science coordinator knew that there was some conversation about this going on and so worked with Diane and put together just a, a real quick summary of some of the things that you can see taking place right now in the curriculum across the district. You can see it indexed by grade level and then by specific grade in there. See the units, see the state standards that are tied into it, just wanted to make sure that you knew that, I think they wanted to make sure that you knew that they were aware of it and it was in play in the curriculum right now. So we offered to share that with you.
Just maybe an interesting note there, the earth and space budget issue aside that we dealt with a couple weeks ago, when that original class was brought forward that we were going to need to require everybody to take it, some of the impetus for that was the standards push with some of this background, right? That schools had been traditionally heavy on physical science and hadn't talked and hadn't required some of those earth concepts around it and some of those climate change. So you see some of those standards in there specific to that earth and space class for that very reason, right? So that's why in Iowa, some of that core curriculum was put in there and then the recommendation from our science team to require that of all students. And then, of course, we worked through, like, I shared a specific example that we've moved some of that down to eighth grade where some students can take it then, but if not, then all ninth graders need to take it. So that would have been just some background for why that change was probably so important and why our kids need to get to that as well for the very topic we're talking about tonight.
You know, I guess, I, I appreciate this, that, that pulled this together. I guess what I'd like to see, one, is that it touches every grade. And it's, this isn't just a science topic, I mean, this is, I mean, the truth is, the stuff's real and we're going, kids are going to live in a world that where, you know, there's, you know, people are going to have wars over water. I mean, that's definitely something in the future, right? So this, you know, this is, I, to see it more infused, you know, that there's more of a, a sense of kind of urgency that, you know, we're teaching these kids, that, you know, this is what hap, and some of it's in here, right? Like, populations and resources, which to me is like a social studies topic. And I'm just wondering, and again, not to kind of dictate that, but kind of understanding, you know, where this is coming from, whether it's a lawsuit going in front of the Supreme Court or since climate strikes all over the world, you know, kids are recognizing the chances of them living in the world that their parents and grandparents live in is, is probably not a real thing for them. You know, the truth is, I, I get what science is saying, the world is not going to take urgent action in the next decade. I mean, that's politically probably not going to happen. So, you know, you're going to have more, you know, whether that's, you know.
Would it be helpful if we reached out to social studies, to other, actually just reach out across our curricular coordinators and ask if they can look at this as a resource and can they assist us to understand? I'm just thinking about what's in the AP Human Geo curriculum. I know a little bit about that, so I know that there's quite a few components that are in there. That's a social studies class. I mean, we could, we could reach out across our curriculum coordinators, share this with them and ask them if they can help us do that with other curricular areas, just to get a better idea of where it is today. That might help us identify some gaps and think about where do we go next?
Yeah, I think it's also this concept of like, taking the learning from this sort of abstract thing that you just got to do because we told you you do and connecting it to your lived experience. Because, you know, the number of times I run into kids who are like, I have no clue how I'm going to use this. Like, I think we should be able to answer that for our kids. This is how this is going to invest your life. And whether it's Algebra II or Language Arts, we should be able to say, this is how this really is impactful for you. And I know those answers are there, I just think that it has never been a priority. And this is sort of one of those things that's right in front of us where we could tie it and say, look, this is why we, you know, here's the problems, we don't even know how to solve them, but we want you to figure it out. And I think that fuels a lot, that makes the education tangible.
Problem-based.
Problem-based and, and solutions-based, you know, that we get kids kind of thinking about this. So it's like, you know, that there is a component within whatever curriculum, how do you use this in your school? So whether it's kids coming up with a recycling program and trying to sustain that or going out in the community and doing research projects. You know, one, addressing the urgency, using what we've got, which is the education. And then always trying to make it more relevant and more very real, real for kids. And, and again, maybe even looking at districts that do have, you know, how do you take a statement? But how does that, you know, one thing to have the statement, but how does that play out in your curriculum? And how do, how do you sort of, it's kind of like equity. You know, that should permeate every subject area, just the culture of the school. You know, this is, is pretty, it's not far away from that, like, this is, and how many people I've talked to who are like, I don't even care about equity or any of those issues, if we don't have clean water, none of that will matter. If everybody on the coast has a move because they don't have room on the coast, so the coast now is five miles in, what does that do to, again, not to be too alarmist, but I don't know if we can be too alarmist, honestly.
Well, that's why I brought up the, the example of conservation tillage, which was, which was breaking generational stereotypes of this is what we've done, we've always moved work cloud and that. And it was introduced and, and I shared with a, with another person that I remember when we were first introduced to no-till. And at that time, it was like, ooh, that's out there. And I was like, that was looked at as, well, that, we were, it wasn't really proven. They were, they were not having the success that we were, but still that was pushing the area. Now we're, now we're going to other areas with biomass and cover crops and things like that. And that starts in, that starts in schools and that conversation goes because our, the, the survey that came out, the Ag Survey that was in the paper on Sunday, farms are getting either larger or smaller. And in our county, they're getting, there's an increase in, in smaller operations. And so, and there's a lot of women that are going into that that are non-traditional ag-type people, so definitely that's.
So you have the next step.
I do, thank you.
On that climate change, and there's a second resolution, and there's a set of dates. I think, could I, can you provide this to us during the process here? If we're going to proceed, we're going to need to adopt a resolution and then inform the Johnson County Commission of Elections that we intend to have a referendum. The date in here was eight to four, four to tomorrow. We clearly aren't going to have a resolution tonight, but if there's interest from the board, we could add this to potentially the May fourteenth meeting to approve resolutions that we can continue the process.
Great, guys.
So we were getting, I thought we were going to get some more information before we decided whether we were proceeding or not. Is anybody on there yet? Like, what we were going to use it for?
Right.
And also the cost of the special election?
So the cost of the special election one, we've got multiple estimates and I think the final response was, I can't give you an accurate estimate until we actually have an election. I think that, wasn't that the last one?
Yeah.
So Travis has been trying to help us. Oh, it was, was forty-five the top end?
Yeah, it was a lot.
Yeah, I think fifteen to twenty, yeah. Those were, he kind of gave us those as, as our goalposts, but said, until we actually hold one of these joint elections, these new ones, and he can actually figure out how much it costs, it's hard for him to tell how much a special election's going to cost.
Well, because it's all new this year.
Right.
To do it all in November. How specific do we need to be before we go to, as far as use of the funds?
If you just adopt the language and code as the example that you've been given here, that's really all you need. It would just be in your messaging to the community what, what you're going to tell them you're going to use it for.
It's kind of like the passing the general obligation bond and having a facilities master plan. So I think at some point in time, you're going to need a Pearl master plan, for lack of a better way to describe it.
Set up the taxpayers and other voters, what's the purpose for it?
Right.
Right.
What are we going to do with it?
How much money is it going to be a year?
It's about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now. It's thirteen and a half cents on your assessed valuation, and when you multiply that out now, it's, it's about eight hundred and some thousand.
Per year?
Per year.
Per thousand?
Per year total.
Thirteen and a half is per, about, per a hundred thousand.
It's thirteen and a half cents per one thousand of your assessed valuation.
Right.
And that translates into about eight hundred thousand dollars a year.
Just calculate that before or after, it was, this was just rose a lot. Yeah. Because they went up significantly. And it seems like we can talk about eight hundred thousand before everybody went up, because I bet it's closer to a million if that's the case. Because it went up a lot. It was thirteen and a half cents.
I mean, to me, the work for the board would be agreeing what we want to spend the money on.
Right.
And, and then selling it. And that, in fact, is what we want to take on in what amount of time.
For me, it depends somewhat on how we're, how we're spending it, as to whether I think we can accomplish it in this time frame. Maybe, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, it's a chicken or the egg, you know, which do you need to decide first? But I guess I kind of feel like, and how we're selling, as to how long we need to build that argument and how long we need to, to interact with our other entities in the area, how much organization that's going to take.
I mean, obviously playgrounds, right? And how does preschool fit in?
So where preschool fits in is it's, it's not preschool, so we cannot use it for preschool, correct me where I'm wrong, right? But it's for the actors, it's for the wraparound.
Wraparound.
Yeah, so, so we've identified that the barrier, one of the main barriers in preschool participation in the district is lack of wraparound care. We have a funding for wraparound care, this would be an opportunity to have some funding.
So we could fund before and after school? What could be funded with this regarding preschool or?
Anything that you can shape to put under the community education umbrella as, as provided in the Iowa Code three hundred, whatever it is, three hundred point twelve or whatever.
So after-school programming, dropout prevention type, I mean, not maybe that, those types of programs?
What, what would cleanse the money better is if you would create a community partnership with your municipalities to, to work with and then you would have a steering committee and you would call it a community education steering committee.
Yes.
And you could, you could do some pretty broad-scope things with that. If you, if you read the, the opinion from your attorney, as long as you capture it under that umbrella, you can, you can be a little creative with it.
Steering committee set up, or you just, like, you know, lady board sessions?
Right.
And, you know, so.
I guess, so what if, so if we identify all our communities, who in those communities would be the point person to bring in? I think with the county in that as well.
We can start joint entities and have a conversation there.
Yeah.
That might be the place, and see if they can nominate some folks, you know, whoever does their community programming or those types of people, Rec Center, folks in Corville, North Liberty, Hills.
And keep in mind, and I know that we can certainly get into this in more detail as we go through it, but, you know, keep in mind that we have some room to grow into that because we've got a backlog of playgrounds. And even if you said, hey, we need to partner with Corville and Hills and North Liberty and Iowa City and Johnson County and we need to get that partnership up and running, we need a steering committee, we need to figure all this out, we wouldn't have any problem expending those funds in the first year, even two, helping us build out some Longfellow-like playgrounds across the district. So that, just, I want you to keep that in mind too. It's not like you've got to have this plan like ready the moment you collect a nickel in revenue because we can, we, we could really use some help with playgrounds on the front end. Yeah.
Well, the reality is that preschool centers don't have any funding to be built, so, I mean, that's a point.
So we've got some room there, I mean, we can have a long-term plan and a short-term plan. So, we got some room there, I mean, we can have a long-term plan or a short-term plan, we'll blend those together.
So, there's two aspects of that, the building and the programming, and this would be the programming piece, but we can't use that to leave the building.
So, who, you know, the other piece would be joint entities, and then I think identifying those community leaders who are gonna help lead the charge, are gonna be able to have the, the campaign piece. I don't think it's fifteen plus one, I don't think it's, it's not a go-bye campaign, it's not that, I'm on a door knocking, certainly I think in the general election, but get some materials up, get coordinating meetings, um, and maybe that would come under joint entities meeting too, like, who, but I'm thinking the folks who have advocated for playgrounds are a good place to start. Very vocal folks who come to community comment, that's a good place to start.
I, I've talked to a couple of council members in different cities already about it, I've talked to a couple of county people about it, a lot of support for the idea, the city, if I was saying that you're gonna really would like to partner with us on playgrounds, that's, that's something that they really have been, I, I, they made it seem as though they've been seeking that with us, and we've not really been able to reciprocate as much as they would like, so.
And it's fifty plus one of all of the voters in our district, right?
No, those who vote.
Whoever turns out and votes.
Right.
Right.
But not individual.
But it's not like each municipality.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So, I think the city is obviously.
Our school district.
Yep.
So, the population. Ian, one of the questions I had, and Steve kind of answered that, we have things to spend money on right away, which is not surprising, are we, do we have the manpower to take on those projects with all of the other stuff?
Our playgrounds, yeah, I think we can, we can, I'm pretty comfortable saying if, if we had the money, we could do the playgrounds, maybe not tomorrow, we could do the playgrounds, yeah.
Thank you for asking that question in general, though.
We got a lot of.
When we bring these things and talk about them and then talk about staffing, you know, we are or are not doing, and they're new ideas and they're all great ideas, but I just really appreciate you just throwing that out as far as, uh, is this something we can really do, or are we just gonna say we're gonna do it and then have it executed?
I know that the last joint entities meeting, hey, Paul started with a, a, kind of a recap of where we're at with our facilities and all of the things we're doing, and he was rattling them all off, the list was pretty darn long, it's all the stuff we're doing, so it's like. That was just this year. I know, I was like, I don't know how many more things we'd wanna take on, but.
So, what do we wanna do? Do we learn, I mean, what, remind me the, the timescale, the, you pass the resolution.
Well, when you look at the timeline on there, obviously tomorrow's our ideal day and that won't happen, but if we had this at the May fourteenth agenda, and if you pass this, it would certainly give us the opportunity to start connecting with Travis and get things rolling on that end, uh, give us an opportunity to start, um, talking with our municipal partners, whether that's individually with them, collectively through joint entities. Start building case statements for playgrounds, for wraparound care, for things like that, so that we can do the same kind of, uh, information generation, because at some point along the line, we're gonna need some advocates. We can't do advocacy, you can do advocacy, but more likely, we're gonna need some, well, Amy's sitting over there, you can't do advocacy, um, but, uh, we're gonna need some people in the community that are gonna help us from an advocacy standpoint, and we wanna make sure we have info.
What happens if we pass the resolution and we talk to joint entities and we can't get advocates together and we can't get enough biomass to actually get?
You don't put it on the ballot.
So, we just don't put it on the ballot. So, this rule, this, this resolution passing is pretty benign, it just keeps us going forward while we try to rally groups around this.
Is there any cost to vote on the ballot in November?
Um, yeah, but, um, since it's on already established election date, we won't have to incur all of those costs.
Right.
So, it's a fairly minimal cost.
We pay a proportionate share.
Mm-hmm. But if you, if you look at this timeline, you notice that April twenty-fourth to November fourth was community education meetings, that's a really big chunk of time. You, you really have quite a bit of time in order to make this decision, you don't have to pass the resolution this month, you don't have to pass the resolution next month, you don't have to pass the resolution the next month. But you do have to give the county auditor the minimum number of days to prepare the ballot, right? And so, and you need to back that up and decide what your message to the community is going to be. I don't want you to feel undue pressure that, that's not on you right this minute, but the sooner you get this underway, the sooner you get it out and you get your message coalesced around, uh, those certain talking points, the better off you'll be, right?
And we didn't wanna put a fall date on there for you because we would like to make sure that we've got lots of time to talk to people about this, before the end of the school year works, we think works much better. And it, May fourteenth would be the last one.
May, no, too soon for a resolution? Yeah, it's after the resolution, and then after, after the next three, four days.
I mean, I'm, I mean, there's, we still put the thing on the ballot, I mean, I'm actually okay with passing a resolution as a signal of intent, and then having joint entities and seeing if we can garner support, advocacy, people signing out to like, Doc Doornock and, um, and, yeah, and we have to know what we're approaching them with. Playground.
Playground. We're gonna have a discussion about background services.
Unless there's some other things you guys can come up with too that, that aren't dependent on us building your building. Gosh, playgrounds would be a long one.
Would there be a tie-dating of stuff we talked about tonight with the? Community mental health or threat assessment or something?
I think we'd wanna go back and think about that.
I don't have a number we can put to it in this one, but.
Yeah, we've got about four-site conversations going here.
Community white partnership about assessing threat or providing cares we'll talk about earlier, that could be a.
Kind of care assessment or threat.
Yeah, just what we talked about, I mean, that's top of mind just right now, but.
That would be tremendous.
There's, there's other grant opportunities though I heard for some of that.
Right, but I mean, if you could, you know, anything you put together, right, so if you're able to get something there and then the community sees that we have a grant there and you're matching it over here, that might be, I don't know, I'm sure we have plenty of prior, competing priorities, but that would be one.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I think if we can, if we hear playgrounds, and so we can go back and put some numbers in the timeline and give you, and a better idea of what that might look like, but then beyond that, I think we'd wanna do some thinking, rather than just throw out a whole smorgasbord of things here, then all of a sudden, they all start circulating, we don't know what we're gonna focus.
Come back with a list and then you guys bring priorities and what you wanna.
That we think that we could, yeah.
And I'd be comfortable passing a resolution and then doing that work, and as it unfolds, we can make the decision.
I think we can.
I think you have honestly lots of time, because remember, November is the election, it wouldn't actually go into effect until the following July one, and then you won't really actually collect any money on this, uh, and, until your tax cycles come in the following year. And so, you've got a long timeframe here, uh, over a year, just to think about it without any money coming in, right?
You're trying to be a downer.
I'm sorry, I'm just, just trying to give you all the facts to deal with here, so you've got a lot of time to think about what this looks like and what you're gonna use it for. A lot of planning can go into this, the whole idea is get it started and get it in front of our, our voters, right?
What's the, um, term of it?
Until it's voted down by the.
Right.
Life. There's no sunset.
Life.
On Pearl, and that's one of the things that you'll hear from your voters, they don't like taxes that don't have an automatic term date.
Eternity plus six months. But I guess, that, that's the part that I think you really have to be deliberate on what you say you're gonna spend it on, cause we can flat-out say, we're gonna make all the playgrounds awesome, until we've done that and we're still taxing people.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's like, oh, hmm, let's, seven years from now, figure out what we're gonna spend, I think we need to be pretty intentional.
What other, yeah, we're gonna have to wear out.
We gotta be defined awesome.
Inclusively awesome, yeah.
And according to law, the board can stop it at any point in time, if that's the community's desire, the board just has to vote to stop it, and that's it, you don't levy it.
You don't have to go back out.
You, it's an annual levy on your budget, thirteen and a half cents, and so you just choose not to do it.
So, do we want to put an, an action item on the fourteen agenda and then passing the resolution as support?
Well, I, I voiced my concerns at the last meeting of trying to get it done in November, and I, I still have some reservations that that's pretty aggressive. I, I also see the side of, okay, we can approve the resolution, and it still might not be on the ballot in November, so, I, I can't really say I have a problem with the resolution itself, so if we wanna at least start putting the feelers out to see what other options we can spend money on and who's interested in helping us drive that boat, cause.
Well, I think, you know, given the hyper-awareness of our community, I think you put a resolution on there, have a conversation about it, I think we'll all hear in relatively short order, whether there are supporters or detractors, I think by the end of the school year, we'd have a pretty good idea.
We don't have any trouble figuring out the line at the podium, depending on what we're trying to get to.
We'll know what people think about it, and then that gives us some direction as we move through the summer and into the fall.
Paul?
I think you know where I stand, I, I originally pushed it to bring this conversation up, so.
May fourteenth? Well, I, I would like to have a discussion with joint entities, you know, and, and like I say.
Yeah, I think that's not till July is our next meeting with them.
So, is this? Yeah, I, um, I.
I mean, we could always set something up too that is not a part of the joint entities meeting.
Sure.
Gives us an opportunity to get the resolution on their agenda, so that we can talk to them about it.
Well, just, just like they say, we, we, we had in the headline today that our water's going up ten percent in the next two years and things like that, I, I just, our, our community is not getting more economical to live in, and I understand that, you know, we have a lot of needs and we're a growing community, but I think they have to be conscious of, of the burden of putting on our, our community voters.
That's why we allow them to vote on it. That's why we would allow them to vote on it.
No, I, I agree, I, absolutely, and I, and I fully support not suppressing the vote on NHI.
Thank you all. We are.